Okay, thank you. I'd like to call to order this committee the whole meeting of September 25th, 2025. At this point in time, I'll put out a call. Are there any declarations of interest for this agenda? Seeing no hands raised, we will carry on. Business arising from the minutes. Okay, we will move on. We do not have any delegations today. And next, we will move on to the determination of items requiring separate discussion from section C, section six. In the consent agenda, there are four different items, so I will ask for if there are any that need to be pulled to examine at the end of today's agenda. Counselor Echols.
I'd like to pull six C. Just to make sure that we've got that clear.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, then it's recommended that the following consent agendas be received and that staff be authorized to take actions necessary to give effect to the recommendations in the staff reports, and that the correspondence be supported and received for information as recommended in the consent agenda. May I ask for a mover and a seconder? Moved by, excuse me, moved over here to my right. Sorry about that. I'll need a seconder. And seconded by the deputy warden. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Okay, so we will then visit six D at the end of our agenda. Thank you. That allows us to move on into our items for direction and discussion. So the first one is item seven A. And it's recommended that staff report PDR CW 5725 regarding surplus lands for housing site preparation and Daris King, Daris King activities be received and that $130,000 be included in the proposed 2026 budget and be funded from the one-time funding reserve to fund select site preparation and de-risking activities for the two county-owned properties in Markdale and Durham. May I ask for a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Nielsen, seconder, seconded by Counselor Dobrine. It's now on the floor for discussion, so I would like to invite our senior policy planner Buckton up to introduce the topic. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Really happy to be here today. So I think Brittany's just going to pull up there. There are some slides for us. Great. So very briefly today, I know there was, it's a very comprehensive report addressing what we'd like to do with respect to these lands, but I've just captured that recommendation here as well. Next slide, please. So we just really wanted to provide a bit of a visual anchor for you. I know we've got some key maps in the report, but I've also included some aerials here. So just wanted to identify that, you know, we have been having some discussion regarding surplus lands for a number of years now. We've been progressing as staff to do investigations around two potentially surplus parcels. That would certainly be a future discussion that we would have with council around their fate. But, but essentially, we've been evaluating them with respect to their housing potential and what we might need to do to prepare those lands to be readily available for future construction, either by the county in partnership or by others through an offering. So we do have a smaller parcel in Markdale and then a larger parcel of about 20 acres in Durham that we've been investigating over the past few years. Next slide, please. And just a little bit of a zoomed-in view here. So with respect to the work that we are requesting funds or budget consideration for, with respect to the Markdale site, that would include archaeological assessment, an environmental assessment, and filing of a record of site condition, and some site servicing work. We've been fortunate to be coordinating together with transportation services staff. There, there is some upgrade happening right now to Gray Highlands, just abutting this parcel as well. So as noted in the report, there are some elements of that site preparation that we think will fall under that project and that, that cost umbrella. But this, this would respect, sorry, this would identify those additional items that we may be looking to, to really establish the principle for residential development on the lands and remove some of the uncertainty. With respect to the Durham site, we would be looking there for some funding to support us in identifying stormwater management, pond sizing. We do understand there will be a fairly large stormwater facility required on that land. And that's a bit of a challenge in terms of identifying the potential for those lands just in relation to the footprint that that facility might take up. So we do want to do a little bit of additional work to just identify how much of a footprint that will take to help us understand what remains for development potential. And then I think there's some conversation to happen as well regarding stormwater outlet for that site as well. And so certainly happy to address questions, but what I would say is that, you know, we, we we have put forward these activities, not just on our own assessment, but with some input as well from the development sector. We did have an opportunity to meet with some folks in August to have a discussion with foreign nonprofit developers, as well as some of the housing operators locally around kind of what, what makes the site attractive or what rules the site has for them to consider around partnership or an offering. And so really, it is this de-risking and then providing that certainty around potential that allows a project to go forward if we were to surplus them. But regardless of what we decide to do with respect to those lands in future, we anticipate that this information will be good press to have and, and would, you know, represent a good investment in those lands and furthering their potential for future use. So I'll, I'll leave it there, but look, I'd be happy to address any questions.
Okay, so do we have any questions? Look for hands. We'll go to Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden Matrasov. Just two, two questions. My first question regarding the Markdale site. In, within the report, the Durham site suggested the possibility of up to like 200 units because of the size of, of the property. Is there an estimate to what we could possibly obtain out of the Markdale site for one? And two, just in consideration of that estimate, Gray Highlands recently rezoned a property very near to this one with approval for up to a six-story building. So I'm just wondering if that's taken into consideration in terms of the type of housing, accommodations, and then maybe the number of units we could potentially get out of that site?
Wonderful. And through you, Madam Warden. So, you know, with respect to the number of units, I do think it will depend a little bit on the form of building that might be considered for the lands. You know, with consideration to that adjacent six-story building and the trail quarter kind of going in between them. I do think we anticipate that probably a tall multi-story building tucked right up on the other side of the trail would not be so desirable. But perhaps there would be opportunity to, to push something kind of along the lot line or, or look at even a stacked row house type of development along the side. When we, we looked at it, you know, we looked through the lines of minimum development density based on our policy. And so that would be 25 units per net hectare. So for this site, I think it's around 18 units minimum. But I would anticipate probably something more in the range of 40 to 60 would be realistic for viability on this site.
Thank you for that answer. And through you, Warden Matrasov. So the second question on the Durham site. When calculating the stormwater pond, it's kind of the same conundrum is where you have to presuppose the form at which it's going to take. So just my understanding of the land use would be if you're trying to do subdivision style, you might need a larger stormwater pond than if you did permit style. So I'm just wondering in terms of council, county staff's estimates when calculating the stormwater pond, the form style it might take.
Wonderful. And again, through you, and I warn him. I thank you so much for that question. Yeah. So with the Durham site, there has been some prior investigation completed. So with respect to the Rockwood Terrace build, that, that parcel was all one piece to begin with. So we do have some prior hydrogeological work that's been done, including bore holes across the site. So we do have some understanding of, of the hydrogeological situation there. There was initially a proposal to place the drainage for Rockwood Terrace on this parcel. So we've seen a preliminary design. But there were some assumptions, I think, tied with that that might not hold true in development of just this parcel. They did provide us with a, a volume estimate of what was expected to need to be held. And so it's really translating that volume estimate into a spatial estimate to understand the footprint piece. In terms of the form of development for those lands, you're right, it's a larger parcel. There's the potential maybe for multiple road frontages with that as well. So I, I could see it having, it could go a number of ways. We could see some traditional subdivision type of development in a portion of that lands. It could have room for a multi-residential as well. So I think that one has the potential to do a few things with. We have talked about, does it make sense for, for us, for example, to forward a, a lot plan to try and divide it out into parcels? I'm not sure that, that that's necessarily the way that we would recommend going at this point, but I think the information around the storm pond will certainly inform us in terms of what we've got to work with and we can reevaluate that.
Okay, sir. Thank you. And certainly, as you mentioned, what we're looking at approving right now will add value to the property. It will give us that information so that we can do those further explorations down the road. Okay, we'll go to the deputy warden.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Thank you, Liz, for the presentation. Or the report, rather. Why on the Durham site are we not proposing to do an archaeological phase one at least to, because I would think that would be a risk to any developer as to what might or might not be there? Please.
Try that again. The microphones are always tricky. Thank you so much for that question and through you. So in that case, the archaeological is already completed. And so as part of that early work, the archaeological was completed for the whole site. There, there, that report found no, no items of cultural heritage value, and they've recommended no further study for the site. So thankfully, that one's off the list already. Check.
Okay, any further questions? Yes, we'll go to Counselor Echols.
Thank you, Madam Warden. And through you, to Liz. I think I'm going to probably state the obvious here, that working with Counselor Nielsen, some of your concerns on the storm water, that portion of the town of Durham, West Gray has a 10-year projection. There will be work being done on Sutherland Street as you get closer to Highway Six. We have had some stormwater issues in the past there. So I think it is in collaboration with this type of project of what that's going to add to it. So that's being addressed certainly going forward. Yeah. It won't be tomorrow, but it will start in 2026.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, not seeing any then. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you, Senior Planner. Okay, so next we will move on to item seven B. It's recommended that CAO RW 1525 regarding a court security contribution agreement and costing implications be received and that staff be directed to fund the anticipated 2025 budget shortfall from surplus realized in the overall corporate services budget, or if none exists, to be financed from the one-time funding reserve. And that the warden and the clerk be authorized to sign the court security contribution agreement and that staff be directed to prepare a letter under the warden's signature to the Ministry of the Solicitor General and the Ministry of the Attorney General advocating for additional funding to support municipalities adhering to the security directives required by the province. May I ask for a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Dobrine, seconded by Counselor Body. It's now on the floor for discussion. Welcome, CAO Schertzur.
Thank you, Warden Matrasov, and good morning, County Council. So the purpose of this report is to provide counsel with an update on the court security contribution agreement as directed by County Council back in July of 2024. This agreement was developed to address the funding gap between the city of Own Sound's actual court security costs, which is called the Court Security Prisoner Transportation Cost and the Provincial CSPT Grant. So what the difference between what the province funds and what the actual costs actually are. The goal of, of the previous direction that was provided to counsel back in July 2024 was to ensure the city is not unfairly burdened with costs for a service that benefits the entire region. Under the Community Safety and Policing Act 2018, municipalities are mandated to provide court security and prisoner transportation services through their local police services. The CSPT grant from the province is intended to support these services, but it's based on expenses from two years prior typically. It's calculated as a proportionate share of a fixed provincial funding pool. And this model often results in, in underfunding as it does not reflect current costs or, or what's, what's actually happening on the ground from a security cost perspective. The Court Security Cost Contribution Agreement allows Gray County to fund the difference between Own Sound's net CSPT costs and the provincial grant. So some of the key terms in the agreement is that the city is to submit an annual financial report to the county by April 30th of each year. The county will verify that report and provide funding within 60 days of council direction. The agreement renews annually and can be terminated if a new agreement is enacted with the province. And, and the city would be responsible for notifying the county of any overpayments. In, in 2024, the anticipated CSPT overage was approximately $250,000. And that was what was included in the 2025 budget. The actual shortfall as reported in the 2024 annual financial report is just under $370,000. So this results in a budget overage of just under $120,000 for 2025. Staff recommend funding this, this overage from any surplus that's realized in the corporate services budget or the one-time funding reserve if there's no surplus that's available. Based on, we've had obviously lots of discussions with, with Own Sound Police Services and city staff about, about why there's some overages. And, and I'll just note that even the 2024 report, we noted that there's fluctuations that can happen with court security costs and, and last year being one of those years. Based on Own Sound Police Services, they noted the rationale for some of those cost increases last year was hybrid court operations still require in-person bail hearings. There was four new part-time special constables began training in December 24, increasing staffing costs. Prisoner transports increased by 265% from 2023 to 2024. There was a court backlog from COVID that they were still dealing with, and it's led to more cases and longer trials. And they noted there's been violent crime and homicide cases have increased, requiring dedicated security personnel. They also noted virtual hearings have declined, leading to more in-person appearances and higher resource demands. And bail hearings now require in-person attendance for consolidation purposes. In terms of, we also outline in the report that there's been new provincial security directives. So we wanted to flag this for counsel that on August 11th, 2025, the Ministry of, of the Solicitor General implemented new security directives. Single public entrance for all court premises were part of those directives. Mandatory screening with metal detectors or wands, and that an armed officer be present on every floor of court facilities. Own Sound Police Services began implementing these measures at the, the POA courts in the Gray County Administration Building. Increase, which will result in increasing staffing and costs. We are clarifying with SoulGen regarding these new directives. So there's still some further discussions that we have to have with SoulGen regarding this and, and try to better understand what those costs will be with respect to these new security directives. So we'll be bringing back further information as part of the budget process once we've clarified that, that information. We just wanted to flag that for this particular report. These new directives will likely result in further cost increases in 2026 and beyond. The impact will be greater if the directives do apply fully to provincial fence courts in addition to Superior and Interior Courts. So as noted, staff will continue working with OSPS, OPP, and SoulGen to assess the financial impact and to clarify these new directives. And we'll update counsel during the budget process once we have further information. Based on those new directives, however, staff recommend that correspondence be sent to SoulGen and the Ministry of Attorney General, requesting that all additional court security costs resulting from the new directives be fully funded by the province. So the recommendation is that this report be received, that staff be directed to fund the anticipated 2025 budget shortfall from surplus realized in the overall corporate services budget, or if none exists, be financed from one-time funding. The warden clerk be authorized to sign the court security contribution agreement that was agreed to previously by counsel back last year. And then staff be directed to prepare a letter under the warden's signature to SoulGen and MAG, advocating for additional provincial funding to support municipalities based on the new security directives. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll put it out then to County Council. Beginning to Counselor Dobrine.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to the CAO. I just wanted to say absolutely support the recommendation. And with the AMO board meeting tomorrow and, or tonight and tomorrow, we will be discussing this as well and would encourage that letter be copied to AMO. I'm confident that my Roma Caucus colleague across the horseshoe, Counselor Nielsen and I will raise this at our caucus as a concern and the, the figures that you are outlining are very helpful. So thank you for that. The, the timing is perfect. Why not?
And thank you to Counselor Dobrine and to Counselor Nielsen and Counselor McKay as well, when he's sitting with Good Roads to, to share those voices and be part of that discussion. So thank you. That's very helpful. Any other questions? Okay, I don't see any further questions then. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you very much, CAO. So next we'll move on to item seven C. It's recommended that report LTC RW 1925 Capital Funding Program and Ministry Survey be received and that staff be directed to complete the Ministry of Long-Term Care survey by September 29th, 2025, indicating Gray County's readiness to potentially develop the approved 62 long-term, long-term care beds at Gray Gables and that action be taken prior to County Council approval as per section 26.6B of the procedural bylaw and that staff be directed to undertake updated cost forecasts and any other applicable studies for the potential development of 128-bed new home at Gray Gables to be funded from the one-time funding reserve and that staff be directed to bring forward a report before March 26th outlining the updated budget impacts and a draft development agreement for council's consideration. May I ask for a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Nielsen, seconded by Counselor Carlson. It's now on the floor for discussion. Welcome, Director Cornell.
Thank you very much, Warden Matrasov. Good morning, County Council. As the warden has indicated, I'm in front of council today to present this report to discuss, to discuss the Ministry of Long-Term Care's capital funding program and their recent request for operators to complete a redevelopment readiness survey. And so I'm going to go over some of the background. There's been a lot of moving parts on this topic over the past number of years. So in 2019, Gray County submitted applications to the Ministry of Long-Term Care for two major long-term care projects. The Rockwood Terrace redevelopment and expansion to a new 128-bed facility and Gray Gables redevelopment from a 66-bed Class A facility to a new 128-bed home on the same property with the existing building repurposed as an assisted living retirement home. Both applications were approved and the province allocated 62 new beds to Gray Gables. That's 128 total beds minus the 66 existing. Staff have confirmed that the new beds are intended to be part of a new standalone facility and not an extension of the current building. Due to the scale of both projects, council prioritized Rockwood Terrace, which is now under construction and represents Gray County's largest capital project to date at $96 million. On February 23rd, 2023, council deferred a motion regarding Gray Gables pending completion of the Rockwood Terrace tender process. With construction now 25% complete, there's an opportunity to reassess the financial feasibility of the Gray Gables redevelopment. So looking at the capital funding program and specifically around the ministry survey, the new capital funding program offers up to 85% funding for new beds on a maximum per-bed cost of $436,000. I just want to note that Rockwood Terrace is not eligible for reconsideration under this program. That was part of our delegation at AMO and we've spent some time confirming that that is the case. The province has committed to adding 30,000 new long-term care beds and this construction funding program is designed to support that mandate. In late August 2025, the ministry released a survey to assess which operators with previously, previously approved but unbuilt beds can proceed in a timely manner. The survey outlines the following development timeline. The survey response deadline is September 29th. Executed, executed development agreement needs to be in place by March of 2026 with a construction start deadline no later than March of 2028. Gray Gables existing 66 Class A beds meet the current design standards and are therefore not eligible for the redevelopment funding under the construction funding program. The 62 new beds are eligible for the CFP funding. Funding for the existing beds will need to be sourced through alternate mechanisms. The ministry survey presents three options. Option one, proceed, proceed with development planning, which would mean the county is opting to maintain the 62-bed allocation and council would be directing staff to explore redevelopment options. So updating cost estimates, concept design, site analysis. And initial funding may be sourced from long-term care reserves or surplus to do that work. And this positions Gray County to meet ministry timelines and secure construction funding that the CFP funding. Option two is to withdraw from redevelopment. That would mean releasing the 62-bed allocation back to the province and it forfeits future funding and development opportunities at Gray Gables under this CFP program. Option three is to defer the decision until the Rockwood completion. This would mean requesting the ministry to maintain the 62-bed allocation and provide further information in 2027. I do want to note for council, the risk here is that the ministry may rescind the allocation due to a lack of commitment. Staff recommend option one to proceed with the development planning and submit a survey response convert, confirming Gray County's intent to execute a development agreement with the province by March of 2026. This agreement would support the potential construction of a new 128-bed home at Gray Gables with construction beginning no later than March 2028. To support this approach, staff will engage external consultants to review existing project plans and perform any applicable studies and site analysis to update the cost estimates. Those cost estimates that we have in place are from 2018, 2019. A revised cost estimate and draft development agreement will be brought to council for review and approval prior to submission to the ministry. And upon confirmation of provincial funding, staff will initiate detailed planning and design phases throughout 2026, followed by a procurement process in 2027 and groundbreaking in 2028. In looking at the financial and resource implications, want to flag a number of areas. Significant additional work will be required should council support the staff recommendation to bring forward updated cost estimates and to complete the applicable studies and site analysis. It's recommended that any costs to complete this work be funded from one-time funding. In 2019, the estimated cost for the project was approximately $37 million based on a per-bed cost of $280,000 from a recent comparable build. Rockwood Terrace, our new 128-bed facility and a direct comparator, was procured in 2023, 2024 at a total project value of $96 million, equating to a per-bed cost on the overall project costs of approximately $750,000 per bed. An almost 170% increase in price from the 2019 comparable. Under the new capital funding program, the province may contribute up to $370,600 per bed, which is 85% of the grant cap. In addition, the county qualifies for up to $500,000 of additional funding to support design costs, which is a new funding opportunity for municipal and not-for-profit operators in, that's a feature of this construction funding program. Based on Rockwood, it's anticipated that costs will exceed the provincial cap and so the county might anticipate a full provincial grant of approximately $23,477,000. Based on the Rockwood costs of 96, 96 million, this would leave a balance of approximately $72,522,800. In percentage terms, based on these assumptions, the total provincial grant would be approximately 24% of the total cost. It's noted that these costs are high-level estimates based on Rockwood Terrace and do not account for inflationary pressures between the time of report and tender. One of the key next steps if council supports the staff recommendation is to refine these cost estimates. Assuming a similar approach to Rockwood was taken and that the balance of funds was funded through to venture, this would add to the county's long term debt. The amount of debt a municipality can carry is subject to maximum limits that are established by the province. And the annual payments to service debts may not exceed twenty five percent of municipality's own source revenue. This is known as the annual repayment limit or ARL. Gray County has established a policy to limit the ARL to ten percent or less. Based on the above figures and other commitments, staff anticipate that there is capacity to assume this magnitude of debt within that twenty five percent provincial limit. But that this would incur a period where the ARL to meet debt repayments exceeds the county target of ten percent or less. In your package, there is a concept plan drawing of the the proposed build that was included in the original proposal submitted to the Ministry of Long Term Care in twenty nineteen. And I know that was a lot, and I'd just like to summarize some of the key points. This report does not commit Gray County to building at this time. What it does is position us to respond to the ministry's request for readiness and to begin the necessary due diligence required to work on this project. The financial forecasting, the feasibility studies, planning work, all of that information to inform a future decision. So if if council directs and approves the recommendation presented, the next steps for staff would be to undertake that work, to update those cost forecasts and any other applicable studies, prepare that a follow up report that would come to county council well before March of twenty twenty six that would include that updated budget information and a draft development agreement for council's consideration. And so that I will leave it at that and hand it back to you, Warden Matrasovs, for questions.
Thank you very much, Director Cornell. So we'll put it out to council committee of the whole members if they have any questions. We will begin with councillor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden Matrasovs, and I'll do more of a comment than a question. Yesterday, county council had its budget and finance committee meeting and during that conversation, we talked about operational efficiencies. This report today shows an idea of how we can move forward with Gray Gables, and I think there's two options before Gray County. The conversation about whether or not Gray County wants to have three is ended. The conversation about what type of home we're going to have at the Gray Gables site is what's before us. To move to a hundred and twenty eight bed facility is a significant difference in operational efficiencies. That's presented by the data coming from Lee Manor, from Rockwood Terrace and is before long term care community management. The difference is the Gray Gables bed as it or home as it stands now may not be operationally efficient, but it is a desirable living facility for the residents of that site. And so I don't think there's a wrong answer here for Gray County in terms of whether we move towards a new facility. But as to just a decision as to do, we go for operational efficiencies or lifestyle for the residents that exist. And so just more of a comment as to what we're doing here.
Okay, thank you. Look around. We'll go to councillor Carlton.
Thank you, Warden. Just a question about what the waitlist status is there. What's the potential for filling that home if we go ahead with the build there?
Thank you for that question and through you, Madam Chair. I did have those waitlist numbers handy for the Town of the Mountain seniors fair last week, but that was so last week. But I can confidently say that the waitlists are lengthy, that people are waiting three months to more than a year to be able to move into one of the Gray County homes. And I don't foresee an issue in terms of occupancy at one hundred and twenty eight beds.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go to councillor Dobrine.
Thank you, Warden, and through you. Thank you for the report. It was very easy to follow. Guess my question, just for myself or for anyone listening, is that we're prohibited from adding on to the the existing sixty six beds to make it one hundred and twenty eight beds. We can add on one hundred and twenty eight, a new new facility and create an assisted living facility. But there's no funding for the requirement to blend the two homes or the beds. We can't. So the province is saying you, if you going to have a hundred and twenty eight bed facility, you can't add on to your existing beds. You have to create a new facility, but we're not going to give you funding for the conversion of the sixty six beds to the new facility. That's my part one. And my other question then, do you anticipate that the assisted, the converted facility to assisted living would help significantly offset those costs?
Great. Thank you for those questions and through you, Warden. So the inter- we'll start with part one regarding the the blending of the funding and the opportunity to add on. So staff's understanding is that this is a readiness evaluation based on proposals that were submitted in twenty nineteen. And so the the we did reach out in the past number of years, I think, to look at what the options were. And the ministry response was that we need to stay true to the proposal that was submitted. If there is an interest to do something different, it would be a separate application under the construction funding program. So it it we're not prohibited from adding on. It would mean starting at the application process with a new application. We have guaranteed these sixty two beds are called, they've been approved by the province guaranteed in that the the proposal was approved. Pending we meet all of these milestone steps, it will meet the criteria for the the funding. And that is all my understanding in support of the mandate of thirty thousand new beds. So that's, CEO, sure, sir, did you have anything to add? No. Okay, and so moving to the second question around the assisted living offsetting the the costs. What we know to this, that is something that we would be wanting to look into and get new numbers, new information in that report that would come before March of twenty twenty six. What I can say from historical research on that, when we were working through that option for the Rockwood Terrace redevelopment that did include assisted living portion originally as part of that campus, we were able to have it break even, to not impact the levy and cost additional money. But we weren't able to have it generate a revenue based on our operations. Are there other opportunities perhaps? But that's the information that I can share today based on the research that we did.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go to councillor Ke- oh, sorry, councillor McKay first and then to councillor Keveney.
Yes, Warden, through you, we had a tour of Rockwood, Rockwood Terrace yesterday. It's going to hold a lot of people at one time. We don't know when that place will be full. And it's very hard to estimate. Like I sway towards option three, just to the fact that we're going to be in debt for a while with Rockwood Terrace. Do you want to go further in depth? We know then we know every year when we set a budget, there'll be so much money put towards Rockwood Terrace because it's long term. Now, if we're going to do Markdale, it'll be the same thing. So right off the bat, on your budget, you're going to be paying debt. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that comment. So we'll go over to councillor Keveney.
Thank you, Warden Matrasovs. I'm also worried about the debt. So I just wanted to confirm, first of all, if I may, Director Cornell. So completing this survey does not commit future councils to the rebuilding of Gray Gables at this point. It would just provide us additional information. And do we know off the top of our heads if we did go forward? You mentioned that that would take debt capacity of more than ten percent but less than twenty five. Do we have any sense if it's closer to ten or closer to twenty five if we did go forward with the build?
Okay, thank you. And through, oh, do you, I I can start with the first one. I thought I would be giving someone some time to sort out the details of the second part of the question. Thank you. And through you, Warden Matrasovs. So correct. This report does not commit Gray County to building at this time. What it commits us to is responding to the survey to say that we are continuing to do our due diligence in the working towards redevelopment.
You, Warden, and just further to what Director Cornell indicated. It provides us with the opportunity, as as the director indicated, to respond to the survey deadline, which is fairly tight deadline of early next week, to say that we're continuing, but it allows us to do that further analysis and then bring back further information to this council prior to that March thirty first, twenty twenty six deadline, which is when we would have to enter into an actual development agreement with the ministry. So so it gives us that period of time is subject to obviously the direction of council today. And that's that's where staff are recommending option one to come back with that further analysis so that we can provide that that information to council. With respect to the 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 debt borrowing ratio, again, that analysis will determine how much we think based on at least a cost, a refined cost estimate of what that one hundred and twenty eight bed facility would look like on the existing Gray Gables site. So that's, we won't know until we do that analysis of what the exact numbers will be. I think we could give you ballparks and maybe turning it over to our finance staff or to, but it's 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 tough to say at this stage in terms of what that percent will be. We just know that it'll be over our current policy threshold of ten percent that council has set. So that would have to be potentially revisited by council in terms of prior to and as part of potentially entering into a development agreement in March, twenty twenty six next year.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go next then to councillor, oh, sorry, Deputy CEO.
My apologies. Information comes flowing in quickly when we're in meetings like this. So based on the cost within the report, director of finances indicated it would be around about thirteen percent. So it would be about three percent over our policy set at the minute.
Okay, thank you for sourcing that information for us. And we'll go to councillor Greg.
Thanks, Jen, for the report. And, you know, I'm sitting here just entertaining everyone's comments and thoughts. Yeah, we did have that budget meeting yesterday and we went through the long term capital planning and and we realized that while we are not at the bottom end of the spectrum in terms of investing in our assets and and operational investment, we're not at the top end, we're somewhere in the middle. So we perform well with our comparators. That said, in the last three years locally, there was a new long term care home built in On Sound, and this is no slate to staff whatsoever. But that built that private home built in On Sound was effectively fifty percent the cost of Rockwood Terrace. And you have to question at what level can we continue to build out and add new assets? I have one line here written down and it's optimizing our current assets. We know that Gray Gables afforded the opportunity to build an extension. I do understand that, I mean, we we removed the assisted living portion of Rockwood Terrace because it had clambered up to around a hundred and twenty five million dollars, I think, when we clawed it back. It's different when you're constructing new versus even entertaining rehabilitating an existing footprint. So if you could maybe make a business case that you break even on building new with assisted living, you're really going to struggle to perhaps use the same business case to show that you're going to break even on rehabilitating an existing thirty, thirty five year old property. You just don't get those same efficiencies. You have higher costs. I think whatever pathway gets us back to if we have to resubmit another application to optimize the current Gray Gables to one twenty eight, that's the pathway that we need to choose and pursue. Another one twenty eight building plus the assisted living is just an amount of debt that continues to go in front of this council and future councils. And it just prohibits. I mean, those are tough discussions we're having yesterday, a budget. And and the more debt you continue to add on, those discussions just get harder and harder. And we maybe none of us will be here to have them. But it'll be brutal discussions for for future councils on on what you can afford to provide for your residents. So I think I did lean towards option three, the one the one line I had under underlined was part of a new standalone facility, not an extension of the current building on page two. And the question then is, why is that there? I think you kind of explained it because it needs a new application. But I think that's the pathway we need to pursue is that new application to get those sixty two beds and pursue the expansion to optimize Gray Gables, not one twenty eight plus whatever it might cost to add the assisted living. I don't think we can afford it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further comments? I I see a finger pointing. Oh, yes, sorry, Director Cornell.
Thank you. And through you, Warden Matrasovs. I I I wanted to just flag that the per bed cost to build is a difficult number to nail down without doing this research and the these assessments that staff are suggesting would be part of a report coming back. And part of the reason for that is that we're we're rarely comparing apples to apples. So the On Sound building was not green space. It maybe has services already. It maybe didn't require earthworks, just as an example. And as we were working through the process for Rockwood Terrace, doing very similar work, trying to find comparators. So there'd be a building happening in the Arn Prior area, but they were being attached to a hospital that already had existing kitchen and laundry. So that had an impact on the cost per bed, for example. So just to share that with council that those are the items that we are currently working with information from twenty nineteen and in the height of the pandemic. Having the opportunity to gather more recent current information and bring that back will facilitate a discussion that has more useful and relative relevant information.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to councillor Dobrine.
Thank you. Through you, just one more question then. Through this evaluation that you're proposing, option one to re to continue to plan and reevaluate, does the province allow us to build a sixty two bed facility adjacent to? Would that be something that would be explored and could come back as part of that planning? Just as I'm not asking for an answer right now because we don't know what the province is going to do ever. But but I'm just wondering if that would be something that would be explored as an option when it does come back to council.
Through you, Warden, and and thank you for that question. Depending, obviously, we'll take the direction from council and Depending, obviously, we'll take the direction from council in terms of if that wants, if, if council wants that to be part of the analysis. As Director Cornell indicated, based on previous conversations and correspondence with the province, that will be a full new application. So there's the, there's a potential risk there that the current bed allocation of the 62 beds would be potentially lost. But, but for sure, if council directs us to include that as part of the analysis, if that's part of, say, option one or a, a version of option one, in terms of bringing, looking at both a 128-bed facility plus or a 62-bed facility, recognizing that that triggers a new application and a new funding model, and there's no guarantees that we might get that 62-bed allocation as a result of that application.
Okay, we'll go to Counselor Dickert and then over to alternate Counselor Allwood.
Thank you, Warden Matrasovs, and thank you, Jen. During our meeting yesterday, there was, one of the questions was the, the allowance that we get from the province operating once the facility is up and running. So if we add 62 beds to our stock, what kind of impact is that going to have on our levy going forward? Because my understanding was we were not getting reimbursed to the amount that it costs us.
Thank you. And through you, Madam Chair, I just want to clarify in terms of operating or the, the actual build.
This would be the operating after it's up and running.
Thank, thank you for that clarification. So there, there is still a levy impact to operate Gray, Rockwood Terrace and Lee Manor. What we do see is efficiencies in operating 128 beds compared to the 66 beds. So a lot of funding is per resident day, per resident month, per resident. And so there is opportunities for efficiencies of, of, of purchasing items of the funding that comes in. So for example, infection prevention and control is a, is managers is a good example. The province introduced funding to support the hiring of those positions in long-term care. When there's 150 beds or 128 beds, often the funding is enough to support a full-time an FTE. When there's 66 beds, it's, there's enough funding to support a, a part-time FTE. And so then comes the discussion in operations we discussed with Committee of Management. Are we able to secure and recruit someone part-time? Then we're, if we're not, then we look at the, we're required to have that position on staff but aren't able to recruit. So then there becomes a potential levy impact to be able to recruit someone full-time where the funding only supports part-time. Those are the kinds of barriers when there is a, when it's a smaller number of residents. The other challenge with Gray Gables in terms of efficiencies is that the home areas are 22 residents per home area, where the maximized efficiency, which we're building at Rockwood Terrace and we see at Lee Manor, is 32 residents per home area. And that allows for a sufficient staffing complement to support the residents in an efficient way. When there's 22 people living in a home area, you still need that base number of staff to support the residents, but you don't have the number of staff, of residents and the funding that comes along. Does that help?
Yes, it helps. But I guess the, the reality is when you add more people, if you're not being funded at the level that it costs you to have those people, there is going to be additional operational costs going forward when you add 62 beds.
Yes.
Okay, next we'll go to the Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Warden, and thank you, Jen, for the report. The amount of, yeah, yeah, it was fairly brief too, but the amount of potential debt and, and how it could impact the operations of this county overall concerns me. So I'm inclined to support option three. The demographics of the province and indeed of Canada would indicate that we're going to need more long-term care beds well into the future, for the foreseeable future. And I, and I get the risk that the ministry may rescind the allocation due to lack of commitment. I would challenge anybody from the ministry to come here and stand here and say this council and this staff are not committed to long-term care in Gray County. Our staff have moved heaven and earth to provide new beds in this community. The number of meetings associated with door handles alone would prove that this group is committed to long-term care. So the repayment ability for the current build in Durham is already pretty much built into the budget. And we've shown that we can afford that. It's a stretch, but we can afford it. To pour more debt onto that repayment ability, that risks not being able to build a bridge somewhere five years down the road. So I'm inclined to think that we need, I would dare the ministry to pull those bids back. I don't think Paul Vickers would come here and say, you need to do this, otherwise we're going to pull those bids back. No way. I don't think he would. And he shouldn't. So I'm, I'm inclined to support option three.
Okay, thank you. And, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over, I went to that direction and forgot to finish on the left here. So alternate Allwood, please go ahead.
Thank you, Warden Matrasov. I mean, I think option one gives us the opportunity to revisit the actual costs per bed in today's economy. I mean, Counselor Greg mentioned the private facilities cost per bed. Director Cornell mentioned, you know, the apples-to-apples comparison and the difficulties in determining what those costs are. What option one does is gives this council an opportunity to know in today's economy, what those potential costs would be. We're not committing to the project at this point. We're committing to refining our estimate of the cost per beds. There's no doubt, as Counselor Milne just mentioned, that the, the need for beds and the need for assisted living is, is a real concern, not just in Gray County. There's competition for those beds across the province. So I believe the risk with option three should not be minimized. I think option one does not commit us to the project. It gives us better information. The concern about the long-term debt and the RRL situation, I think it was mentioned 13%. There's that significant difference in the cost of those beds could potentially bring it back down to within our approved policy. But again, option one gives us better information, does not commit to moving the project forward and allows council to make an informed decision. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Counselor Greg.
I'd like to make a motion to split the vote, please, because parts two and three are very much intertwined in the recommendation.
Okay, so Counselor Greg, could you just please articulate to the clerk out of the paragraphs that have been moved and seconded, which ones you would like split?
One through four, I think, is appropriate for this, as opposed to any amendments hitting the floor. I think it's clear to split the vote initially and then introduce amendments.
Okay, so Counselor Greg, what we would like then is, is a motion to divide. So I will look for a seconder for that. May I ask for a seconder? Okay, it's seconded by Counselor Eccles. So we'll give the clerk a moment to put that up on the screen so everyone knows what they are voting for. Okay, so we'll give a moment for it to come up on the screen, but I can read it out, that the motion be amended to strike clauses. Oh, nope, sorry. There we go. Okay, that the motion be divided into four clauses. That is simply the motion that is on the floor, moved and seconded. But for the sake of everyone knowing what they're voting on, I'd like to see it up on the screen as well. There we go. Maybe in a bigger font. Okay, so that is what we are discussing at this point in time. Any discussion on the amendment that is before us? To split it, yes, CAO.
Thank you, Warden. Depending on obviously council's direction on, on clause two, as well as potentially then clause three, clause three and four probably need to be together just based on the tight timelines that we're under. Again, depending on the direction that's provided by council with respect to any amended motions that may come about for clauses two and three. So, so I'm just raising that because three and four are fundamentally linked in terms of meeting those timelines depending on the direction that council provides.
Okay, so perhaps what I, Madam Clerk, would it work then that we keep the motion to amend in four clauses, but when we get, after we voted on the first two, then we'll pause and see if we need to combine three and four? Okay, so we will have that flexibility if we do it that way. Okay, any other discussion on separating these clauses and voting clause by clause? Okay, I don't see any hands going up then. I'll call that vote, all those in favor of the amendment. And that motion is carried. Okay, so we will now look at them each individually. And again, it would be helpful if we could have that up on the screen. Thank you. Okay, so we're there. Before we get into any of the votings of these, was there any final discussion as a whole? Okay, and just to recap, Director Cornell, as you introduced at the beginning, as we talk about these various different options, that there's obviously good dialogue going on here that you can take away in terms of the future report, the kinds of questions. Oh, okay, just to hold on a moment, Counselor Eccles. Sorry, there's just movement going on back here. Okay, we'll just wait a moment there. So you've, you've, this will inform the future report that's going to be coming. You have mentioned that we're not making any, any decision here, that this does not commit us in any one way or another. It does respond to the readiness so that we can do our due diligence and respond to the, the province, the way that they're asking, whether or not we like what the province does in terms of this or how we articulate our commitment. That aside, they've given us homework to do. We have to respond to that. It would though, this does give us the time and space to do the preliminary work and put together a future report that will help inform a future decision. Did I encapsulate that correctly? Okay, thank you. All right. So with that then, let's visit the clauses individually. We have the first one is that report LTCRCW 1925 Capital Funding Program and Ministry Survey be received. This is, oh, sorry, yeah, and I am going back to Counselor Eccles, but I do want to clarify that all four of these clauses are still moved and seconded by the original mover and seconder. But I did see a hand go up when there was some staff interaction over on this side. So I'll just look to Counselor Eccles. Did you have a comment?
Thank you. And further, we're taking this motion, and as I read it in number two, says readiness for potential development. We talked about something about what the debt load is going to be. Right at the present moment, we have 319 beds. My, somewhere around the potential of the tax levy dollars, there's somewhere between $5 to $10 million a year from the levy goes into support that. My, isn't that ballpark for that? So with $5 million, 319 beds, for quick math, it's about 15, yeah, about $15,000 per bed that we subsidize those beds. If it's obviously 10 million, it's closer to $31,000 per bed per year. Last time these conversations come up around long-term care and everything else, I didn't have any gray hair, but that was a number of years ago. I've developed a little bit more since. I suspect that I'll develop a lot more if this conversation goes much further. 62 more beds isn't going to get us any operational efficiency. Lee Manor was redone, refurbished to get operational efficiencies. And we really haven't. It continues to go up at the rate of inflation for what the county puts into beds. Another 62, the debt to build 128 bed facility is tough to swallow. But it's going to be the ongoing support of that. I think that's where Counselor Dickert was going to put that against and the repayment of that debt. Conversations around here, and we all are concerned that the federal government has put themselves into so much debt. Our grandchildren, when they're in these facilities, will never see it paid off. And efficiencies that could be get, or we got if that money hadn't been borrowed. Our province has been even worse, in my mind, about accumulating debt over the last 20 years. And that's been under two different governments. So I'm not favoring one over the other. And the previous one in the 90s was probably even worse again. I, I'm having difficulty, we've got to vote on number two. And number three and four are the ones that are saying, give us the information. Number two is already saying, we're going to tell the province that, yes, we're ready for this. I'd like to see us vote ahead of that. At least get some numbers before we go and tell the province and fill out this survey. Yep, we're going so far down the rabbit hole here, boys. We can't get back out of it. And then have questioned 10 years later around this horseshoe. How do we find enough not to build a bridge, but to even put in a culvert? You won't need to worry about that in 10 years, Pat, but it'll be something that your legacy is left with.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to look to Director Cornell. She'd like to address any of that. So the question is, is the challenge of voting on clause two when we don't perhaps know what might be out there in terms of clause three and four? You did say that we are directed to respond to the survey, but it does not commit. So do you want to just address the comments that were made by Counselor Eccles? Oh, we'll go to the CAO for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Warden. This goes back to my previous comments in terms of depending on this direction of council with respect to clause two and how then clause three and four then tend to play out. As the Warden indicated, and Director Cornell indicated, we do have to provide a response to the province by September 29th in terms of the current bed allocations of 62 beds as, as it relates to Gray Gables. So, so as noted in the report, there's three options that are, that are laid in those report, in the report. My, my recommendation is that, that council consider those, those three options. If, if, if council's not supportive of, of the options being put forward or as being recommended, then, then I, I would recommend council then consider the, the other two options. Because then that will provide the direction that will, staff requires in order to respond back to the, the survey that's due on Tuesday or Monday, or whatever, whatever day that is. So that's, that would be my, my recommendation at this stage because then it, it clearly then identifies how we're going to be responding to that survey. As noted, there's, there's potential risks as it relates to options two and three. There's potential, a lot more work to be done as it relates to even the staff recommendation of option one to bring, to do that further analysis or bring that information back to council. And so depending on, again, the direct from council, my, my suggestion would be to look at the three options within the report to provide direction as it relates to, I'll say, what clause two looks like.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other comments? We're looking at voting on clause one, which is to receive the report. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded by the original movers and secounders, and we are now going to, I'm going to call the the vote on that the report LTCRCW twenty five nineteen twenty five capital funding program and ministry survey be received. Okay, I'll call that vote. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Okay, so we now sit. Okay, so the clerk has advised that this would be a good point for us to take a break because we're also being conscious of 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 the rest of the day and the rest of the addition, but Director Cornell, perhaps you need a break at this point, too. So we'll do our ten minute. If we can be back at twenty two, please, then we will come back in twelve minutes. Thank you. If I could just call our council members back to the table. Thank you. Okay, I have the word from technology that we are good to go after our break. And at this point in time, then, I would just like to take a moment to defer to the Deputy CAO if there's any clarity he would like to provide on this next consideration, which is clause number two.
Thank you very much. And through you, Madam Warden. So just just for clarity, recommendation number two in the report. In essence, if that fails, it's a direction to staff to not respond to the survey. So recommendations three and four are therefore mute. So if recommendation two fails on the floor, we will not be responding to the survey on Monday.
Okay, thank you. Now, was there a question from Councilor Gray? Yes.
Yes, thank you. And I'd like to introduce an amendment to clause two that staff respond to the ministry survey representing option three as council's direction.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, and the second part is that you wish for it to be recorded?
And a recorded vote if there's a seconder.
Okay, so while that's coming up on the screen for us, I will put the question out. Is there a seconder for the amendment that Councilor Greg has put forward? Councilor McKay is seconding. So we'll give a moment for it to come up onto the screen. Sorry, I can't read from the back of my head, so they're just putting it in front of here for me. Wasn't a trait that I developed acutely as a teacher to see everything from the back of my head. I always had good ears, though, Councilor Eccles. Okay, Madam Clerk, that's good. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. The amendment to the motion reads that the motion be amended to strike the words Gray County's readiness to potentially develop the approved sixty two long term care beds at Gray Gables and insert that staff request the ministry to maintain the sixty two bed allocation and provide further information in twenty twenty seven. Okay, and okay, it's the provide further information is the staff directive, not the ministry. Correct? Okay. All right. So with that, let me ask for a staff response in terms of should this motion pass, what would that mean? Let's do the if and the just so we understand, because we have broken this this particular recommendation into its four components. Who on staff would like to begin? CAO?
Thank you, Warden. Should this amended motion pass? And then the fully amended revised motion clause two pass? Then looking at clauses three and four, like this provides staff then with enough direction to respond to the survey response. Clause three and four would essentially be then tabled, essentially, or or what staff would recommend is table those those clauses three and four, because they essentially become redundant at this point in time. We don't need to proceed with the analysis at this time. We don't need to proceed with them bringing back further information in order to hit that development agreement deadline of March twenty twenty six. Again, going back to what was indicated earlier by staff, if if this amended option two were to proceed, as noted in option three in the report, the ministry may rescind the allocation just due to lack of commitment. So so that is the potential risk. And just wanted to, again, flag that for for council's awareness.
Okay, so for clarification, should this this amendment pass? The the part where we say that we request the ministry maintain the sixty two bed allocation and provide further information in twenty twenty seven, although we know the commitment and we have certainly demonstrated the commitment to the province, the province may just simply say that means you're not ready. So we're going to move those sixty two beds out of this region. Okay, all right. So with that, this particular amendment is now open for discussion. We'll go to Councilor DeBreen.
Thank you. And through you, to whomever can answer. We are requesting the ministry to maintain the sixty two bed allocation and that the ministry provide further information in twenty twenty seven?
Sorry, that was a question that I asked in terms of the grammar. So the the intent of the motion is that its staff provide the further information. I understand why you're asking for that clarification.
Through you, Warden. I would take that as that staff through further direction from council would need to provide further information to the ministry in twenty twenty seven. But at this stage, if this again minute clause were to pass, we would respond to the ministry at this stage to say we would we would request the ministry to maintain the sixty two bed allocation, and we will provide further information twenty twenty seven, once we have further information at that time.
Okay, I just before I go to the follow-up, Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask that you just insert staff provide further information so that there's no question. Okay, Counsel DeBreen?
So it'd be staff providing further information to the ministry in twenty twenty-seven. Do we have an opportunity in replying to the survey to explain the nature of until we actually finish our Rockwood Terrace redevelopment? So that they know that we have a desire to pursue, but we just cannot commit at this time?
Through you, Madam Chair. So the survey has limited fields, but there is an opportunity to articulate barriers and challenges. So those barriers and challenges could be listed there. And I just wanted to make sure that I'm clear as staff that the the option three is that, that our, we will provide further information on direction from county council to the Ministry of Long Term Care in twenty twenty-seven. So there are limited fields, but there is an opportunity to note barriers and challenges.
Okay, we'll go to alternate, alternate hope?
Yes, thank you. This is very difficult, especially since I'm a relatively new arrival here. But in the Tannoy Mountains, we've been dealing with the ministry about long-term care beds. And what I have learned is you, you don't want to risk the beds. And what I've heard from the C O is, is that that is the risk that we're taking right now, even though we're trying to cover it with the motion. We are risking not moving forward, and I'm being governed by that and the experience that I've had at the Tannoy Mountains. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And are there other comments? We're going to go to alternate Counsel Allwood and then over to Counsel Carlton.
Thank you, Warden Matrasoff. Just for clarity, if we went with option three, does that take us out of this capital funding program timeline? We wouldn't be eligible?
So you, Madam Chair, I'll take that one. That's hard to say. So we don't know how long, how quickly the province will respond. If we tell them we're interested in the sixty-two bed allocation, we have to now wait for the province to tell us what they'd like us to do with that allocation. We do know the next milestone they've laid out in this grant round, though, is March twenty twenty-six. And, and you know, unless the province responds very quickly and we're able to come back before council and receive direction very quickly, it's going to be very difficult for us to get the background work done in order to inform that, to meet that March twenty twenty-six deadline. So assuming that it takes some time for the province to come back to us, we've got, we would have a very, very short amount of time to meet the next deadline in the capital funding.
Follow up, so it adds another element of risk to moving this direction. Thank you.
Yes, the C O has confirmed that is correct. An extra element of risk. We'll go to Counsel Carlton.
Thank you. So that was part of my comment was about the element of risk and do we really want to risk losing that allocation at this point? When we don't have all the information yet. But it means if we risk losing that and not having the redevelopment go forward or a new build go forward at Gray Gables, we continue to run those beds less than operational efficiency. We've got twenty-two beds in each unit where we've been told that thirty-two get some efficiency and saving on costs. So I just hesitate to lose the ability to get that information going forward on what everything would be before we make a decision. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go to Counsel Keating.
Thank you, Warden Matrasoff. And just as a matter of information for county council, I did ask our deputy C O at break about our current A R L, and I'll turn to Niall, and if you would share that with county council.
So through you, Madam Warden, thank you for the question. Was able to confirm with Director Spicer that our current A R L, including the full impact of the current ongoing work at Rockwood Terrace is around about the seven percent mark.
Yes, seven percent. Okay. Other questions on this amendment? Okay, I don't see any other comments or questions from regarding this amendment. So we are going to vote on the amendment that the motion be amended to strike the words Gray County, County, Gray County's readiness to potentially develop the approved sixty-two long-term care beds at Gray Gables and instead insert that the ministry request, the ministry, that staff request the ministry to maintain the sixty-two bed allocation and staff provide further information in twenty twenty-seven. We've heard it, we've discussed it, it's been moved and seconded. There was a request for a recorded vote. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
So, thank you. Counsel Mackey is absent today, so that's been indicated on your sheet. Counsel McKay? In favor, Counsel Carlton? Opposed, Counsel Pringle? Opposed. Counsel Allwood? Opposed, Counsel Nielsen? Opposed, Counsel Patterson? Opposed, Counsel Dickert? In favor, Counsel Kettner? In favor, Counsel Keating? In favor, Counsel Body? In favor, Counsel Greg? In favor, Counsel Mullen? In favor, Counsel DeBreen? Opposed, Warden Matrasoff's? Opposed, Counsel Hope? Opposed, Counsel Echols?
Favor.
In favor, Counsel Hutchinson?
In favor.
So that motion was carried forty-nine to forty-three.
Okay, carried, so therefore we're now going to have a look at clause two as it has been amended. And as that gets transposed into the new clause two that we will now be voting on, I will look to the deputy C O now to, to review with us. What happens if this motion carries? What happens if it fails in terms of our response to the ministry and what happens after that? Thank you.
So thank you and through you, Madam Warden. So assuming this carries, we will respond to the survey on Monday, the twenty-ninth, confirming that we're interested in using our sixty-two bed allocation, but are unable to commit to what exactly that looks like in the timelines laid out. We will then await for the ministry to respond to us before coming back to county council to seek further direction on that one, which will, will involve that follow-up in twenty twenty-seven, we anticipate, to the ministry. At this point, I believe as, as the C O has indicated, it would be prudent to table the third and the fourth recommendations in the report.
If this motion passes, if this motion fails, then where does that put us in terms of the, of actually responding to the report? I will look at the C O, if you want to, just, just so people are clear what they're voting on.
So I guess if, if this amended motion were to fail, then we would need to still seek further direction from, from committee in terms of responding to the survey. Because at, at this stage, then we wouldn't have any direction in terms of how we were to respond to that deadline survey of the twenty-ninth.
Okay, so we're now back to discussing clause two as it has been amended. Discussion? Okay, I'm not seeing any further hands for discussion, so I'll call that vote. All those in favor? Okay, could you just keep your hands raised for me? Okay, thank you. That motion is carried. Okay, so as per the recommendation from the C O, it would be worthy of now tabling clause three and four because of the change that we've made to clause number two. And what I can do is I can put the call out for unanimous consent. Is there anyone that disagrees with tabling clauses three and four for a future discussion at a future point in time when we follow through with the decision we just made? Not seeing a hands up in dissent, Madam Clerk, so we can say that that is under unanimous consent, that we are tabling clauses three and four. Okay, so with that, then, thank you, Director Cornell, and thank you to our both deputy and our C O for your assistance in navigating us through that decision-making. And we're just a little bit ahead of, we only just recently had a break, so I'd like to at least see where we are in terms of doing items seven D first before lunch is a cold lunch, so it can wait a little bit for us. And so with that, if I could please direct your attention to item seven D, and this is going to be introduced by Director Myers. And it reads that report E D T C C W eleven twenty-five industrial development charges holiday in quotations be received. And that staff be directed to prepare the relevant amending bylaws that incorporate a reduction on the industrial portion of non-residential development charges to zero for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six and bring forward for council's consideration that staff be directed to return any funds collected since twenty twenty-five in the payment for the industrial development charges, which as of July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five was estimated to be less than twenty-five thousand. And that staff be directed to start the twenty twenty-six development charges by law review process before year end and to fund any expenditures in twenty twenty-five from the development charges general government reserve. May ask for mover and seconder. Okay, that's moved by Counsel Body, seconded by Counsel Echols. It's now on the floor for discussion. Welcome, Director Myers.
Thank you very much, Warden. And through you, good afternoon. County Council is officially twelve o'clock, so we are in the afternoon. Niall and I are going to tag team this report with you. But I do want to mention that this was really a team effort between Randy and Scott and Niall and I, a cross-departmental discussion to get us here today. As you know, non-residential development charges, they were introduced for the very first time in the current bylaw that we have right now. So in two thousand and twenty-one, they were approved and they took effect on January first, twenty twenty-two. Because these were brand-new charges, they've been in a phased-in approach over this time, beginning in January twenty twenty-three. At that time, the significant economic pressures that we're seeing politically in our environment, tariff threats, none of that was predicted. And the pressures of the pandemic and post-pandemic recovery were not truly understood at that time either. We're seeing that play out today. Through approval and implementation of the Corporate Strategic Plan and the Economic Development Tourism and Culture Master Plan, county councils prioritize economic development and investment readiness across the county. Focus first and foremost on the businesses that we have here today, who have already invested in our community. And then looking at business that could be attracted and welcoming new investment to this region. So today, the economic environment has shifted dramatically. The market business, a state of perpetual uncertainty, there's instability due to these global forces of the pandemic and tariff threats. So in this environment particularly, our competitive advantage is being challenged. Locally, it is not a new conversation to you either, that Gray County lacks significant investment-ready lands. That is something that we are working on through multiple different projects right now. But this lack of supply further compounds the competitive of Gray County for industrial growth and new industrial establishment. So while there's little evidence that suggests development charges create a financial barrier for industry to invest or to develop as a whole, these are costs that are within our control as a municipality, whereas other costs of development are beyond our control. So within the current development environment, seeking to proactively review these costs can support investment. It's a demonstration of something that the municipality can control in encouraging new investment in our region and growing that assessment. And you'll notice from that chart that's in this report, what that difference looks like between the non-residential, the industrial-only portion of that, and then the assessment that comes from these investments, whether they're expansion or attraction, they are significant. This conversation is coming to you today after multiple conversations with industry partners right across the county. Some who are here and have been here for a very long time, others who are looking at the county to come for a very first time. So in this current fiscal environment, a move such as a D C relief or a holiday in this case would be viewed as key in respect to investment decisions. And this is especially true when we're working to retain and expand the industry that we have here today. Many of whom are dealing with pressures from their home companies, who may be interprovincial or American parent companies, when trying to forecast their expansion opportunities and where it makes sense to do so. So something like this may help tip the scales, as we would call it, in favor of long-term strategy and decisions being made here in Ontario and in Gray County specifically. We've looked across Western Ontario, we have a, as group of all economic development directors from Western Ontario Wardens, and we meet monthly. And we had a conversation about these charges. Nine of the fifteen counties currently have non-residential development charges in place for industrial development similar to us. Five include an exemption policy and others are under review right now, having the same conversations, given the environment that we find ourselves in today. Just to note as well, before I turn it over to Niall, that for our member municipalities who have these non-resident industrial charges, this is not an ask for you to make any adjustments locally. This is something that Gray County can do on behalf of all of our municipalities as a region to help spur investment readiness right across, without a local impact to you in your ask. So I just wanted to take that off the table in case anyone's thinking we're going to ask any municipalities for a match. That is not what is part of this ask. So I'm going to turn it over to Niall to talk about the how.
So good morning, good afternoon, as I just pointed out, and thank you for the opportunity. If Savannah's the, the salesperson, I'm the one that comes with the reality check at the back end of this in some respects. So, so waiving or giving a break and I did a, a, a holiday for development charges doesn't come without cost. The, the, the numbers that we've collected over the last couple of years are embedded within the report. Seventeen thousand dollars or just over seventeen thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three. And twenty twenty-four was seventy-nine, just short of eighty thousand dollars in, in, in these charges that we have collected. And, and we can't forget that that money comes in. So our bylaw has established both a, a, a development charge that we need to collect. It's also established the projects that we are aiming to achieve with, with the money that is collected. And so we do have to find that money from somewhere else to make those projects whole. We believe that that can be easily, can be accommodated within the existing reserves that we're carrying. And a, a large piece of this work, as you'll see later on in the report, is around transportation infrastructure. And so we can, we, we don't believe that any projects need to be put on hold or deferred, that the funding is able to be relieved from other, other funding sources for this two-year term. As has been noted, we would advance the, the development of the next D C bylaw as quickly as possible, so that we're able to conclude this conversation. And these conversations are not new to council. You've, you've experienced conversations around how we might be able to influence and enhance development opportunities, how we can increase the competitiveness and development charges have been part of those conversations in, in the past. And so staff believe, as, as was laid out earlier, we're able to provide this holiday. We, we understand from multiple businesses that this is something which would be helpful and an attraction to Gray County. And so I'm here to stand in support of what's being put in front of you, that we put forward this, this holiday period and start the, the next round of the charge studies and background work.
Okay, thank you both. So I'll put it out to council committee, the whole members, if they have questions, we'll go to Counsel Body.
I don't have a question, just a suggestion. I don't think it needs an amendment of the motion, but I would think it would be great if the county could write to every owner of industrial lands, once assuming this passes, once this passes, to everyone that owns industrial lands, you know, fairly soon, telling them of this as a, as a motivation. And so it doesn't wait to leak out that we actually get that message to people that need to hear it. Thanks.
Thank you for that comment, and I agree, I don't think that needs to be embedded into the motion. And any other comments? We'll go to Counsel Nielsen.
It was a race, Counsel Greg. So going back again to yesterday's conversation about budget and finance, we look at ourselves as trying to, how do we cover the cost and expansion of things we're trying to do? Development charges are put in place to help municipalities fund growth through growth. By implementing the holiday here, we are, I understand, trying to get industrial lands built upon. But there's other avenues that make Great Highlands an attractive place. Land value being one of them is probably significantly less here than if, if you're trying to bank the same land in the G T A or other areas of Ontario. One of the things that, when I saw this report, I was interested to kind of hear staff's response. Both the provincial and federal government's election campaigns and comments talked about development charges, they talked about trying to get rid of them. However, both have also said about making municipalities whole. If we remove the development charge already preemptively, are we losing out on the opportunity if the province and feds try to? are we losing out on the opportunity if the province and feds try to shut us down? Are we losing an opportunity for money coming from them to cover the costs of the growth? We need to cover the bridges, transportation routes, right? These are costs that we have, there's implications when it comes to losing development charges. And so I guess my main first question to staff is, are we risking losing potential funds from Brokaw Province and feds who have committed to saying making us whole if the development charges are raised?
Well, go to the C A O.
I think I lost the rock paper. Through you, Ward Mattresshoffs, great question. At this stage, we have not heard how the province and federal government plans to keep, keep municipalities whole based on any changes as a result of the Development Charges Act that we know have, there's been several changes over the last few years. What we have heard recently from the province is a bit of a change in approach and direction with respect to development charges, recognizing that there is a purpose for them. As Nile indicated, there is, there, there, they help to fund those, those growth related aspects. I think what staff are bringing forward today is, is A two for, as part of the recommendation, let's, let's start the D C background study review as soon as we can, because we think this is one aspect that we want to look at. But we also think this aligns, as Savannah noted, with our, our strategic plan, our E D T C master plan. It's another potential layer that we can help to spur further industrial development growth to help attract more employment opportunities within Great County. That's going to be fundamental as we look at our demographics and as we look at our, our growth projections. We're going to need workforce aged population coming into our communities in order to sustain our, our communities. And this, we think, is just one, one added bonus layer that we can potentially offer. That's in our control, is in our sphere of control at this moment, to be able to help spur some of that. And that's why we're putting for both the recommendation to, to look at this as a recommended holiday. But let's advance the D C background study work now, especially given that twenty twenty six is an election year, so we, we're on tighter windows as well. So this will allow us, staff to be able to put out the R F P, hire a consultant and hit the ground running right at the beginning of Jan one, twenty twenty six with the D C background study. So that we can analyze not just this component, but all the components of our D C background study. Hopefully by then, we may have some further information from the province and federal government in terms of how they anticipate to keep us whole. But at this stage, our recommendation is to, to put forward that holiday. And I see Nile may have some further comments through you, Warden.
So through you, Warden, thank you for that, and thank you for giving me my brain a chance to catch up. So the benefit of the holiday is we're not actually rewriting the bylaw. So the charges still actually exist in the bylaw. So if we ever did have a conversation, they're still embedded. We still have the support in terms of the need, we still have the support in terms of the level, the amount of the money that needs to be collected. This is just a holiday that's been offered temporarily, so.
Thank you very much, Warden Mattresshoffs, for a chance to respond. So for, for one, the, as far as I understand it, because Great Highlands did the same thing, we needed a development charges holiday for residential builds to encourage residential building. As you stated, the county itself will have to fund those costs. If the D C charge holiday goes through and you see a spur in the next eighteen months to the end of when this D C policy or, or the charges plan and cycles over to the next one, all the money that has, that comes in will have to be recouped and recovered somewhere within the county, be it from one time funding or something, we have to pay ourselves that money. So there's part of me that thinks if this is the direction county wants to go, wait till the end of the development charge study or do this as part of the next study to remove this industrial so that we're not trying to then pay ourselves, because that's what we'll have to do. If some large scale industrial development happens, Great County is going to have to pay itself that money because the policy exists. One, two, I also find it interesting that the one cycle when this got introduced, we're not even finished that cycle and we're already saying, we want this out. And so it seems like there must have been cause justification and reasoning why this development charge got put into the study and the plan in the first place. And we're not even through that cycle and we're saying, let's hurry up and get the cycle started so that we can remove it because we didn't, we didn't like what we did. So part of me is, have we given it the chance to do what it's supposed to do, which is to help raise development charges to fund the growth? And part of it is the potential cost somewhere in the county to recoup the funds that we're going to set up.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go to councillor Greg next.
Glad to speak. I don't know if, if the C A O wanted, he had his hand up before I speak.
Okay, C A O before councillor Greg.
Thank you, Ward Mattresshoffs. And, and just to, to reemphasize what I think Director Myers indicated earlier. You know, at the time when we were introducing and discussing a, a new non-residential charge, which is, as Savannah noted, is, is, is our first crack at this as part of this, we, we didn't know the outcomes of, of what the pandemic and, and what we were anticipating and see in terms of construction costs. We also did not anticipate some of the stuff that's happening south of our border with respect to the economic uncertainty that's been created by tariff threats, et cetera. So, so given the current fiscal environment, given that we're trying to help spur some further industrial employment land growth again through our through our work of our economic development team, as well as all the member municipalities through part of what we call Team Gray. Our recommendation is to, to do, implement this holiday at this point in time. And then, but revisit it and review it as part of the D C background study work, almost in parallel.
Okay, over to councillor Greg.
Thank you, and through you, Warden. Really good comments councillor Nielsen. Mayor Boddy would likely support the fact I am not a supporter of development charges at all. And I've demonstrated that several times at the lower tier municipality. But I think the, the time to really, the exactness is when you're doing the study. And once you've adopted the study, that's the template that everyone has to follow. And one missing line that hasn't been spoken yet to is in the last couple of years, or twenty three to twenty four, we're up about four point five times in terms of the D C revenue. So there is a multitude of competitive factors that exist in the marketplace and the pandemic, it's way behind everyone now, so we don't want to look, I mean, ninety five point two three percent of the development charges collected from industrial use are going to road and related work. We don't have to replace our roads or our bridges, which are engineered for load capacities for Honda Civics or Toyota Corollas or G M C Sonomas. There, we, we have these huge costs that we have to undertake which are driven by large vehicular traffic and trucks. And they service exactly what this conversation is about today. So it's not a large dollar. But I think it is something that just needs to stay in here. We decided as a council, that's, that's the template. And that's what they're used for. Ninety five point two three percent contributes to your roads. And if it's not there, then that ninety five point two three percent or twenty four seventy nine thousand and change is paid for by the driver of the Sonoma or the driver of the Civic or the driver of the Corolla. So I think they are purposeful once council has decided they're in there. And I think, I don't think we should be supporting this, we take another look at it when the time, the cycle goes through, looking at the D Cs.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to councillor Dobrine.
Thank you, and through you, thank you. I know that we recently didn't support a subclass for affordable housing. And I'm not certain that we are waiving the development charges for affordable builds. Just comparing apples to oranges. And reducing the development charges ultimately comes at a cost going to be a burden on the taxpayer. Would it be better rather than to waive the D Cs entirely, but to defer the D Cs for industrial development pending the D C study that we're going to undertake? That they could be waived or wiped at the, at the conclusion of that? Or entered into a payment plan as opposed to not collecting them at all now or in the future?
So through you, Madam Warden, and thank you for the question, either one of us could have taken that one, I think. This is around trying to provide some certainty in the landscape. And so that one of the challenges with a deferral is a, a business that might be interested in developing if there was no D C versus a business that was not too worried, wouldn't know what their future costs would be with a deferral. So if we were simply pushing this down the line, it doesn't necessarily say, send the same message that we're investment ready as the, as the holiday that we're proposing.
Okay, I'm not seeing any further hands. Okay, so we're ready then, we will call the question, it's been moved and seconded and discussed, all those in favor? Okay, I think I'm going to do a count here. Can you just keep, keep your hands raised, please? And all those opposed? And so that motion is defeated. Okay, and let me just look to the C A O in terms of next steps.
Thank you, through you, Ward Mattresshoffs. The, the final clause in that, that motion to advance the D C background study review. I was wondering if, if council may entertain that, that clause, that motion, so we can advance the D C review as soon as possible.
Okay, I'm just going to confirm with the clerk because we have technically voted that down because we've already voted it down. So do you need a two thirds majority to revisit that single clause? Okay, so the clerk is advising that there is something that can be done in terms of that, so we don't, so we can consider that separately, but just not at this point in time. So we'll have a further conversation, we'll return to it. Okay, and remembering that this is committee of the whole, so we do have council coming up in two weeks' time, so. Okay, so with that then, that concludes this matter. After lunch, oh, sorry, councillor Boddy.
Could we not just put a motion on the floor right now to reconsider, get our two thirds vote and move ahead with that?
Just a minute, please, we're just conferring on process. Okay, thank you very much, as we navigate our way through the intricacies. And, and yes, we just wanted to know in terms of the timing, and as I mentioned, this is committee of the whole, so anything can be polled and reconsidered. Can be discussed, I don't want to use that word reconsider, can be discussed further and voted on at council. However, there is a pathway, a, a motion could be made to, to reconsider. It would require a two thirds vote and then we could then open that topic back up again for a singular vote on that specific item. So councillor Boddy, is that your wish?
I was on the losing it.
Yep, good point. So he's just, he's just confirmed, it does need to be somebody that actually voted on the winning side. So, okay, so I saw councillor Eccles' hand go up and I saw councillor Nielsen's hand second. So it is being councillor Eccles, can you just articulate for the clerk what it is that you're moving?
Move to reconsider the previous motion. Well, I can't get that, I've got to reconsider the motion. Put it back onto the table. Then we might be able to split it, but to reconsider, I've got to put, get the whole motion reconsidered. Yeah.
Okay, the clerk is advising it is possible just to open up clause four for reconsideration. Okay, and I'll just confirm with the seconder. Seconder councillor Nielsen, you are, yeah, okay. So this will require, require a two thirds vote that we reconsider, open for reconsideration, item four, and madam clerk, we're just going to vote on reconsidering. Then if there's two thirds vote, then we discuss the actual clause itself and vote on the actual clause itself. Okay, great. And, and because, yeah, okay. So with that, I'm going to call the vote then for reconsideration of clause four only, reconsideration. How many are in favor? Okay, well, there you go. I didn't have to do much counting there. So that, that passes, madam clerk. So now we are going to entertain that staff be directed to start the twenty twenty six development charges by law review process before year end and to fund any expenditures in twenty twenty five from the development charges general government reserve. So that stands on its own, it's being moved by councillor Dobrine, seconded by councillor Carlton, any discussion on that? Yes, councillor, we'll go to councillor Greg and then to councillor Dobrine.
Thank you, and I don't think it's prudent that council supports that. That was part of a motion that was defeated by council just minutes ago. And in moving forward with such action, you're effectively just spending monies in two thousand twenty five that were never budgeted to be spent in two thousand twenty five, and it's just brought before you as the result of a losing motion. Where it belongs is in two thousand twenty six budget considerations.
Okay, we'll go to councillor Dobrine.
Thank you. Thank you, and through you, I am supportive of beginning the process. We are scheduled to do a development charges review in twenty twenty six, therefore the monies would be budgeted or allocated in order to do that study, we're required to do that study starting in twenty twenty six. This is a matter of three months advance and perhaps through the process, we have to go through an R F P, we have to do all of that, we may not even start it until twenty twenty six. I am confident that we would be doing this anyway. We've, we've advanced road projects in, for four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars that were earmarked for twenty twenty six and moved them up to twenty twenty five because it made sense to do so.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? We'll go to councillor Eccles.
Just for clarification, this motion that's here is that it comes out of the development charges general reserve to do this, that's how these are always financed. So even if it was put into the twenty twenty six budget, it would be the revenue to offset this expenditure would be coming from this reserve anyway. So it doesn't have an effect whether it's on twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six. Comes out of the development charges, the expenditures from there. Am I correct in that?
Through you, Warden, that is correct. The, the funding source for the development charges review would be from the development charges general government reserve. Just a note as well, and I think the bulk of the work will still be in twenty twenty six. What this allows, because we anticipate, say, the twenty twenty six budget may not be approved by, by bylaw until, say, January of twenty twenty six. What this allows us to do would be to advance the R F P work, starting setting up the terms of reference for the steering committee so that we can hit the ground running come January first, twenty twenty six with the D C review. So that's what we're anticipating as staff, it buys us that two, three month period that we would otherwise lose in the early part of twenty twenty six by doing all that work come when the budget is actually approved. So that's why staff are recommending to still proceed with that particular clause in this motion.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, so I'll just read it out then, we are now voting on that staff be directed to start the twenty twenty six development charges by law review process before year end and to fund any expenditures in twenty twenty five from the development charges general government reserve. It's been discussed, moved, seconded, all those It's been discussed, moved, seconded. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Okay, thank you. So that concludes that particular item and that allows us then to pause for lunch and then afterwards we have two, we have one more for discussion, then we need to revisit one item from six and then moved move into closed session for two other items. So we will adjourn then, madam clerk, to reconvene at yeah, at 1:15. So we'll look to have everybody back here at the horseshoe at 1:15. Thank you. Okay, welcome back County Council. We are going to continue with our open session agenda and for a committee of the whole. And next up, we have item seven E, and it is recommended that report EDTC CW0925 regarding Ontario Transit Investment Funding OTIF, known as OTIF Grant Be Received, and that staff include the anticipated 2026 county levy requirement of $145,000 in the 2026 draft budget for council consideration, and that the clerk, the warden and clerk be authorized to sign the transfer payment agreement, the TPA, and that the warden and clerk be authorized to sign the applicable partnership agreements with the partners of Bruce County, Dufferin County, and Sogging Mobility and Regional Transit, also known as SMART. And we will be having manager Stewart will be introducing that topic. But first of all, let's put it on the floor for discussion. Moved by councillor Hutchinson and seconded by councillor Keveney. It's now on the floor for discussion. Welcome, manager Stewart.
Thank you, your worship. Good afternoon, council. I'm pleased to be here today to provide an update on the exciting progress we're making towards understanding the potential development of a unified regional transit network across Gray County, Bruce County, Dufferin County, and in partnership with Sogging Mobility. This initiative builds on previous training planet planning efforts, leveraging past insights and recommendations to develop a seamless, inclusive and equitable system that meets the needs of all of our diverse regions. Gray County, in collaboration with our regional partners, as mentioned, have successfully secured up to nine and a half million dollars in funding through the Ontario Transit Investment Funding Program. This funding will support the development of a unified regional transit network that reflects the needs of our communities and builds on existing services. The purpose of today's presentation is to update all of you on our key milestones and our timelines to set early expectations for the work that will be done and seek your continued to support as we explore what is possible. A regional connected transit network has the potential to significantly improve the quality of life of our residents, especially those who rely on public transit for work, education, healthcare and social connections. Our key milestones to date have been, on June 6, 2025, the province announced the nine and a half million dollars in funding to support this project. On June 12, council approved the report EDTC CW0525 to accept federal funding and initiate a proof of concept study. On August the 14th, 2025, a request for proposal was released to engage qualified vendors to design and cost a regional transit network. August 2025, that transfer payment agreement was received from the province and staff had a chance to review it. September the 3rd, Wellington County decided to join our RFP process on with a focus on integrating along Highway 6, which is our Guelph to Owen Sound transit route, and look at Highway 9 corridors and into neighboring communities. The study will explore how Wellington County's RideWell program will also be able to be leveraged to enhance our existing services and our regional connectivity. On September 19th, last Friday, the RFP did close. Our next steps will be to award successful bidder. And then between October 2025 and March 2026, we will work closely with the successful bidder to develop a proof of concept study and then bring that back to you in the spring of 2026 for consideration. All throughout that study, though, you will have the opportunity to be an active participant and be a stakeholder and let us know what you think, of course. About the proof of concept study, the RFP was developed collaboratively with our partnering counties and Soggy Mobility. Wellington County was later brought in, as just mentioned. The study will give staff and council the information necessary to make informed decisions about the future potential of a unified regional transit system. Once the study is completed, all the information will be presented to you for your consideration. This information will outline how funding would be allocated, the exact costs for years two through five, the service levels we could achieve according to different levels of budget, and forecast of potential costs beyond the grant period. How will we sustain this long term? Importantly, no funds will be spent on a new system until council has reviewed the study and the findings and approved the final plan in 2026. So what can you expect to receive from this study? The study components include community and provider engagement, a needs assessment and a justification report, governance modeling and legislative compliance, transit network and service plan options, fleet planning, a fully costed financial plan including fair structures and sustainability, a comprehensive review of Soggy Mobility's infrastructure and their operations, and a software integration for SMART and home and community support services to facilitate streamlined bookings, eliminate double dispatches and improve coordination. The study is expected to take approximately six months, followed by presentations to all of you back in the spring of 2026, sorry. At this time, I'd like to pass it over to Savannah, and she will speak about the specifics of the OTIF grant and outline the next steps in more detail.
Hello. After lunch now. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about the OTIF grant in particular, but I do want to note that we do have a closed session component available with this report so that we can talk in more detail about that negotiating potential with the province. So if that's something that you decide we can go into, I will start, but then we can move into that if everybody's comfortable. So as Stephanie mentioned, the TPA, it was formally received on August 25, so after the announcement was made. The budget schedule, you'll notice in Schedule D, it outlines a year by year breakdown from years one through five. What is interesting about this is that because no formal decision has been made on the implementation of a unified transit network, the numbers in years two through five are estimates. They are the best estimates that we have to date, and we can talk a little bit about that as part of the negotiations enclosed. So we have had many conversations with the province, and Steph has a great relationship with them. So it's really nice to be able to get immediate answers through this process. They have confirmed that these financial figures in two through five are purely estimates and an upset limit in terms of provincial funding. So those true estimates will not be understood until we do the study. So this is very backwards to how we would normally ask you to be looking at a TPA, but that's something that we can discuss further as well. As Stephanie said, there will be no decision on implementation or what those costs would look like until we actually know what the program could look like and what the costs could look like. The TPA does outline that we can change year over year funding through amendments if both parties agree. That means that we can look at mutually beneficial agreements once the plan is finalized. And these two factors, they enable council the flexibility to be able to accept the funding now and then complete the study and then come back for follow up discussion. So if you are okay with it, we would love to be able to talk a little bit more detail about those negotiations. But I'm going to pass it back over to the warden.
Okay, thank you very much, Director Myers and manager Stewart. So as the director has identified anything that delves into a topic that really should be saved for closed session, hold on to those thoughts. Are there any discussion or questions that need to be asked here in open session at this point in time? Councillor Eccles.
Thank you. Through the the budget process at the bottom, it says other municipal contributions. Is that the part about Wellington coming in, or would that be the town of further municipality of Gray Highlands contributing?
Thank you for that question. As you know, SMART is a partner in this, so all of those budget lines around gas tax, municipal contribution and revenues are all based on SMART's current operations as a partner in this.
Councillor DeBreen?
Thank you. And through you, I can't recall what the contribution is from the other counties in this, but the levy requirement from the county is 145,000. I'm going to presume that they're equally participating. The fourth clause doesn't include Wellington County at this time, but the staff report references that. So if it if it's a closed session discussion, then we can look at that.
Okay, so we're going to hold on to that, Ba. Okay, any other questions that need to be asked here and open? Okay, all right. So we do have the motion that has been moved and seconded is on the floor, and we do know that we will have a further item later in the agenda. So seeing no further hands, I'll call the the vote. All those in favor? Oh, sorry. Hold on a moment. Okay, let's table the vote on this until we come back out. There may be further open session discussion prior to opening to voting in open until after the closed session. So we'll we will table the I will not call the vote at this point in time. We do have one more item to deal with in open before we can go into closed, however, because we did pull item 6C. Or are you going to suggest we do that after that? Okay, I can tell when she's leaning in on me. She's got a thought. Okay, so to keep the continuity of the discussion going, let's go to the closed session matters, and we will not forget about the item that we pulled from the consent agenda before everybody leaves. So with that, looking at section eight, it's recommended that the committee of the whole does now go into closed session pursuant to section 239.2 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended to discuss number one, a position, plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. And there are two items cited, number one, negotiations regarding investment readiness, and number two, negotiations with the province of Ontario. So with that, then I will ask for a mover. Moved by councillor DeBreen, seconded by councillor Carleton to go into closed session. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. So we'll wait until the room is secure to carry on with our conversation. Thank you. Okay, so we've returned from closed session, and I can report that committee of the whole proceeded into closed session to discuss a position, plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board with regards to number one, negotiations regarding investment readiness, and number two, negotiations with the province of Ontario. And direction was provided to staff on the investment readiness matter. So with that, we are now going to return to Yep, so we're just down to the last item, number 6C. Oh, that's right. That's right. We we paused, we tabled things until we could come back out. I was just going to say, wait a second. This isn't the staff member I was thinking we were going to have here. Okay, so welcome back. We will now continue then with what we had left off in terms of the transit transit funding.
Okay, thank you. Through you, Warden. So the last part of the report is talking about better budget considerations and next steps. So as you know, right now, we are just about to do the study. As Stephanie said, it closed last week. So we're getting ready to look at that award and then do the work. In terms of getting ready for 2026 budget so that we're not coming back to you after the budget's already been passed, we are looking for your support to include the estimated allocation in the 2026 budget, dropped budget for council consideration. And that way it is not something that is added in after the fact. Once the study is complete and we do have a detailed five year implementation plan, then we will come back with everything that we have learned. And that's when we can have the broader discussion about what does years two through five look like? What does funding commitment potential for all of this look like? One thing that we do want to note is that in through this process, the province, they have indicated their support to see OTIF funds sustain the service of the GTI Route 2 and Ghost during the study period until a new service, whatever that new service looks like, is in place. So with this knowledge, staff are currently engaging county partners to determine shared interest, and we will be back with a subsequent report to have that conversation. So that is outside of what we're asking you today in terms of executing the TPA, entering into partnership agreements with our partners on this TPA, and then allocating those dollars for consideration as part of the budget process. So we'll leave it there, but Stephanie is back. If you have any other questions as well, we're happy to take them.
Okay, so we had some good discussion prior to going to closed session. So now I'll just put out a call if there are any further questions for staff regarding this or comments. Okay, I'm not seeing any then, and it has been moved and seconded. It was moved by councillor Hutchinson and seconded by councillor Keveney. We did take a break, so I'll reread it so that everybody knows what they are voting for. That report EDTC CW0925 regarding Ontario Transit Investment Funding Grant Be Received, and that staff include in the anticipated 2026 County Levy Requirement of 145,000 in the 2026 draft budget for council consideration, and that the warden and clerk be authorized to sign the transfer payment agreement, and that the warden and clerk be authorized to sign the applicable partnership agreements with partners from Bruce County, Dufferin County, Sogging Mobility and Regional Transit. With that, all those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, all right, madam clerk. Now we're going to 6C. Okay, we are going to 6C. It was councillor Eccles that had actually pulled this item. However, we will look to the CAO to do an introduction for this. And the recommendation for it is to receive for information. So let me look to get that on the floor. It's recommended that correspondence received from Enbridge Gas Inc. Regarding the future of natural gas expansion in Ontario be received for information. May ask for a mover and a seconder to receive this. Moved by councillor DeBreen, seconded by councillor Hutchinson. It's now on the floor for discussion. So so CAO shirts are if you'd like to be in.
Thank you, Warden, myself. So I'm not sure what the question was from councillor Eccles with respect to this correspondence, but I'll just give a brief note to say that correspondence, of course, was received by Enbridge. Unfortunately, that was not received in time to be a part of the September 11th Committee of the Whole agenda. There was an ERS ERO posting put out by the province regarding this particular topic matter. The comment deadline was September 22. So the comment deadline is already has expired, has ended. And so that's why the recommendation is to receive this for information at this time. Should council be interested in further information regarding this correspondence or what is being put forward by Enbridge as part of that that recommended motion that was circulated? Staff will recommend that a staff report be brought back to council with further information before any decision is made. But outside of that, yeah, that's why we're recommending receiving it for information, just because the comment deadline is has expired as a result of the ERO posting.
Okay, so it is on the floor for discussion with regards to receiving for information. Councillor Eccles, you had requested this pulled.
Yes, the timing was obviously terrible, but I don't see how it would be detrimental or that if we did try to put it in, if we did make a comment on it anyways, we didn't meet the deadline. But the importance of having natural gas supplied into our county is imperative to any growth that we're going to make. It seems to be one of those very important infrastructures. Bad timing that it isn't there, but I think it would even be worse if we didn't respond at all. When we respond late, yeah, we've responded late. And province, you know, make note of that. But if we don't respond at all, then the province totally ignores us for ever, because obviously we didn't even say anything about it. So I think that we should comment, put a report in, even if it does go in late.
Okay, so the recommendation is is that if there's anything beyond receiving that we simply direct staff to provide a report, and then the the results of that report could then be shared with the province, even if it's post deadline. I'll look to the deputy warden.
Thank you, Warden. Southgate did respond. And so we're happy to share that with the with the county as well, if that's helpful.
Go ahead.
Yeah, if council directs staff to bring back a report with further information regarding this topic, we're happy to to do so. Yeah, if council directs staff to bring back a report with further, further information regarding this topic, uh, we're happy to, to do so. Um, that would be our recommendation at this stage. Um, there's a lot of nuances with the, with this particular topic. Um, so we just want to make sure we're providing that information to council. Um, and of course, we'll reach out to each of the member municipalities to see any responses that were provided uh, prior to the ERO deadline, uh, and we're happy to uh, compile those, those comments as well as part of that report.
Okay, and that may assist us in the fact that it would be post deadline because we could say further to the submissions from Southgate, et cetera. This is the further thought that we had on the topic. Okay, so with that, then, I will put it out there if, if somebody, uh, so councillor Eccles, would you like to uh, move an amendment to the main motion?
I, yes, I would. Trying to think of what the appropriate wording. But there's probably somebody sitting to, closer to your left than my left uh, that would be able to come up with wording to say that we're direct staff to uh, make a post-comment to the province on this? There's something in that context?
It's okay, I just, yeah, that's right, that's right. Um, to respond to that, so uh, the recommendation, if you so choose, councillor Eccles could be that the motion be amended to request staff to provide a follow-up report on the natural gas expansion in Ontario with the possibility of providing comment to the province. Okay, I see the knot of the head, so that's being moved by councillor Eccles and seconded by councillor Kentner. Okay, so that amendment to the main motion is now on the floor for any further discussion. Okay, so, oh, uh, yes, uh, alternate councillor Allwood.
Thank you, Warden Matrasov, through you. The uh, municipal of Gray Highlands had a natural gas expansion task force and worked with Enbridge closely on the anticipated phase three, so we're excited to see this. Even though the commenting period has passed for the county at this point, I'm, I'm, I'm encouraged to see the uh, enthusiasm for natural gas expansion in Gray County. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Any further comments? Okay, not seeing any, so we are voting on the amendment. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Okay, we'll give the clerks a moment to update the new main motion. Okay, it's there. Now we need to receive it as well. Okay, so it now reads uh, that the correspondence Okay, that the correspondence received from Enbridge Gas Inc. Regarding the future of natural gas expansion in Ontario be received. And that staff provide a follow-up report on the natural gas expansion in Ontario with possibility for, of providing comment to the province. Any further discussion? Not seeing hands. All those in favor? That motion is carried. Okay, thank you. That concludes all of the reports that we have had on today's Committee of the Whole. We are now at other business. Is there any other business? Okay, I will put a call out then, item number 10, for any notices of motion. Councillor Greg.
Thank you, Warden. I give notice that on October 9th, I will move that, whereas Part Two of the Municipal Act, General Municipal Powers confers broad authority on the municipality to enable the municipality to govern its affairs as it considers appropriate and to enhance the municipality's ability to respond to municipal issues. And recognizing community safety is a foremost concern of residents and that automated speed traffic cameras assist in responding to resident concerns that this council asks MPP Vickers and MPP Sanderson support this position in opposing any provincial legislation introduced to prohibit the use of automated speed enforcement.
Thank you. Any other notices of motion? Uh, deputy warden. Okay, right back at you, October 9th. Okay. All right, any other notices of motion? All right, not seeing any. Uh, then we just need a motion to adjourn? Uh, okay, I'll take the deputy warden. That's right, and uh, followed by councillor Dobrine. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Excellent work together. Thank you very much, County Council.